For our many saints, deeds, and thoughts that perhaps were not present in our sight. We thank you for the semitically undeserved blessings that we enjoy each day. We pray today that you give us wisdom and knowledge and guidance as we receive in here the requests from our citizens to make Shreveport a better place to live for our children. It is in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to your brother, for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name when you do come forward, please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted to the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if so desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. shreveportcattlempc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If the comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking an action on that agenda item. All of the MPC board decisions are subject to appeal either to the city council or the parish commission depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to the matters that you are concerned with. Copies of this document and phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, ladies and gentlemen, please remember to turn off all cell phone while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Thank you. Now, to our agenda, I want to begin our agenda today first and foremost with a recognition, and I think certainly a well-deserved recognition. I thought I saw him when we stood, I'm sure I did, Dr. Philip Pennywell. Dr. Pennywell is here, and I understand Mrs. Pennywell is with him too. Why don't you come forth, Dr. Pennywell, Ms. Pennywell?
Dr. Pennywell, when I came on to the MPC, had already been serving and doing the yeoman's job of serving, has given and dedicated so much of his time and talent to the citizens of Cattle Parish and Shreveport specifically. As a member of this MPC board, he has been, his service has been invaluable, and it'll take us a long time to erase the etch and the indelible impression that he's left on not only those of us individuals who have had the chance to serve with him, but this community in general. So, as a result of that and in acknowledgement of that, Dr. Pennywell, on behalf of the members of the Metropolitan Planning Commission and the staff as well, we want to present this to you that simply says, presented to Dr. Philip Pennywell, member of the Metropolitan Planning Commission from January 1, 2014 to April 5, 2017, in appreciation for dedicated service presented by the members of the Shreveport MPC of Cattle Parish, again, as well as our staff as well. Thank you so much for your service, and God bless you.
Great Street Award from the APA Louisiana Chapter. I'd like to ask Mr. Alan Clark to come down and make this presentation.
Mr. Chair and the board, very, not very frequently do we get an opportunity to represent our city in such a positive way. As a representative of the executive committee of the Louisiana Chapter of American Planning Association, Louisiana chose to develop an award for great places in the state of Louisiana that goes in conjunction with great places in the United States. And we in North Louisiana, since the year 2013, had never submitted an application for a great place. And I shared with my colleagues and companions in South Louisiana that I was very proud of North Louisiana, and that North Louisiana was a very great place to be a part of, and a wonderful place to live, and we would show them how wonderful North Louisiana really was. So, I sent out requests to all of the different cities in North Louisiana, Monroe, Ruston, Shreveport, Bossier, Alexandria, for great places that they wanted to submit for an award. The only, the only submission that we got was the 600 and 700 block of Texas Street in Shreveport, Louisiana. And the people with the state of Louisiana were so impressed with the 600 and 700 block of Texas Street that they can barely wait to come and be a participant in the state conference that will be held in Shreveport in October of 2018. This could not have been possible, though, if there had not been a Liz Swain.
That's true.
And we thank Liz from the bottom of our hearts for her work. We've worked on this for three years. It got lost, and we just kept trying and trying. But on behalf of the Louisiana Chapter of American Planning Association, I would like to present to Liz Swain the Great Street Award for the state of Louisiana.
Also, before we go any further, would like to, as we have thanked Dr. Pennywell for his service, want to also welcome to service and introduce to some and perhaps present to those who may already know him, the newest member of the Metropolitan Planning Commission, Attorney Curtis Joseph. I had a lot of good things to say about him, but I wrote them down, I don't know where I put them, but trust me, he's gonna do a good job. So, with that, one other thing, we have the approval of our minutes from our April 5 meeting. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, something?
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Smith, to approve the minutes of our April 5 meeting. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no. All right, is everybody, yeah, is everybody? Also, I'd like to, now, I do have a couple of additions to our agenda that would need to, that I'd need to vote on to add to the agenda, two items to add to the agenda. The first item is a resolution that will be added to the agenda in reference to commission training. The second item is a discussion on the contract of the executive director. And if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask about, to get a vote to add to the agenda on both of those items, please. I have a motion by Mr. Andrews, a second by Mr. Colvin. All in favor, please vote yes on those additions. All opposed, no. Thank you, passes unanimously. We will add those to the agenda. The first thing that we just added was a resolution with reference to commission training. I asked our secretary, if you would, to read that resolution, and then we'll react to it after the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shreveport Cattle Parish, state of Louisiana, whereas Act 859 of the 2004 Louisiana Legislature requires that newly appointed members of planning commissions, zoning boards of adjustment, and similar boards must receive at least four hours of training in the duties and responsibilities of planning commissioners, and whereas the importance, it is important that all commissioners, zoning board of adjustments, members and similar board members should have a basic understanding of planning, land use, zoning laws, and ethics in order to better fulfill their responsibilities, and whereas a planning commissioner's workshop was held on March the 8th at New Orleans, Louisiana, American Planters Association State Conference, be it resolved that the Shreveport Cattle Planning Commission certifies that the following commissioners attended said workshop on that date, and that these commissioners hereby comply with the four hours of training requirements of Act 859. Commissioner Theron Jackson has been trained. Please join me in welcoming him.
What's your, that resolution submitted for, for the commission, what's your pleasure?
A motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrews, a second by Mr. Young, to accept and adopt the resolution. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. All right, thank you, that passes. Next is our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have items six through...
Eleven.
And we will, we want to take those, but I have some, since that there is one case that we want to pull from this, from the consent agenda, and then we'll, we can take it up once we've dealt with the other items. So, we will be on cases, items six through 10. Ladies and gentlemen, we want to seek to approve these on items six through 10 on our consent agenda. What's your pleasure?
A motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Smith, a second by Mr. Young, for items six through 10 on the consent agenda. All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no. Right, it passes. We have one item from our consent agenda which there is some concern or discussion, case number C-40-17. It's a use approval. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Seth Rieg. I'm an attorney here in town for a company called U.S. Assets LLC. I'm the applicant and also the in-house counsel for that, for the company, the landowner as well.
All right, any questions for, so, what was it?
It's Rieg, R-E-E-G.
For Mr. Rieg, any questions in the commissioners? What's your address again?
My current address is 401 Market Street, Suite 560, here in Shreveport, 71101.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rieg? Hearing none, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in, I guess, in favor of this application, I would say, or anyone in opposition?
I'm in the middle. My name is Tom Arsenault. I live at 536 Jordan Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101, which is directly across the street from the, from the applicant. One, my wife and I are very excited about this project. We've, my wife has been in the house with Mr. Rieg to look at it and made some suggestions that they have taken, so we're very excited about the restoration of this home. It happens to be where my senior picture was made. At one time, a photographer lived there and had his studio underneath, Mr. Drummond. 1968, 1968. I graduated in 69, my picture was made before the school year started, so I have lots of fond memories of the building. But our concern is that there are only two parking spaces, and this is a 5,000-square-foot building, and so we have, a prior, frankly, we believe, illegal use of the property resulted in literally dozens of cars parked along Jordan and Stevens. So, what we have, what we have proposed is, is a restriction on the number of business people who can be in the building, equal to two and a half times the number of legal off-street parking spaces, so that with two spaces, that would be five. If they added three, we tied it to the parking spaces so that, as they were able to add parking spaces, and I know that Mr. Rieg is actively working on acquiring some additional parking, so we wanted to make sure that it could go forward. They have to get a parking variance anyway, but I was concerned that if the parking variance went through, that you could occupy the whole 5,000 square feet. That's not what their intention is, and we're, we certainly are appreciative of that. But we've had troubles with second-generation occupancy on this house before, so we're a little bit concerned. So, that's what our proposal is. We want it, we would like for you to approve the use, and we think it's appropriate, and we're very excited about what they're going to do with the building, but we just want to limit the occupancy in some way based upon the number of parking spaces that are available. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Ramides, I wasn't able to get this to you, but I did give everybody else a copy of the stipulation, so, and I've provided an electronic version to your staff. And I have also provided one to Mr. Rieg. Any other questions?
Yes, and under the provisions of the ordinance, it very explicitly lays out that under use approval, the planning commission can add additional stipulations, so it is within your purview to do what Mr. Arsenault has requested, if you so choose to do so.
Mr. Rieg, to what extent would this limit what you're currently doing?
Good, good question. So, currently, we operate an office with two full-time employees, myself and a paralegal. We also have abstractors in town, which brings our number to four that are in and out of the office. It wouldn't limit us at the present. There's two onsite parking spots. This is obviously an old house that we're seeking to turn into a, into a legal office. There's two paved parking spots on the site right now with room to expand to a third. I think if we can, if we add additional staff beyond that five, I think we could easily pave the, the extra spot there, give us a third spot and go up to eight under the, under the ordinance. I don't foresee us moving up to beyond eight, to be honest with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, anybody else? Anybody else to speak in opposition? Hearing none, commission, this is a stipulation to be added. This would be approving case number C-40-17 with this particular stipulation, if it's your pleasure.
And there's some additional stipulations there, too, as you'll notice.
This will be added to the current stipulations.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Damon, two, a second by Ms., with the stipulation.
With the stipulation.
By Ms. Cooper, with the stipulations that exist, plus the added stipulation as well. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Thank you. If you were here today in reference to any of the, in reference to any of the consent agenda items, item number six through 11, those have all been taken care of at this point, so you're certainly welcome to stay, but you're also free to leave if you'd like to. We dispensed with case six through 11. Next, we move to our public hearing. In our public hearing, our first case is case number P-10-17, a zoning request. Is there a representative or applicant here? If you would, for the record, state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Brad Barre, spelled B-A-R-R-E. My address is 338 Janey Lane, Shreveport, 71106.
Welcome.
Thank you all so much for your time. As you know, we are looking at purchasing a piece of property, and we're looking to put a strip center on this piece of property on Eller Road, about 2.68 acres. Right now, it's zoned at RA, and we're looking for a B2 approval in the zoning for construction of a new professional building. We do have a bank that is interested in signing a lease, very strongly interested in signing a lease with us, and we have talked to other medical companies and other things of that sort about coming in. We have not signed any leases because it all kind of depends on this zoning change. So, that's where we're at. We're proposing that we just change zoning to a B2 zoning. As you know, Eller Road is changing, and there's a lot of new B2 and B3 zonings within that area, we think, just within 400 feet, that there's quite a bit of new zoning changes that has come out that we feel it could benefit our strip center if we had.
All right, questions? Mr. Bar, is it?
Barre.
Barre.
Yes, sir.
Questions?
Do we want to ask him if it was B1?
Oh, Mr. Young, I see Mr. Young in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Barre. It was from my reading of it and a discussion we had earlier, that most of what you can do, or what you're trying to do, you could do with a B1 as opposed to a B2. And let me, let me cover my point, and then I'll let you respond to it. Generally speaking, not always, but generally speaking, we try to take a B1 that buffers next to residents, not a B2 because of the difference of type of businesses and the effect it can have on the existing bordering residents. And so, and I fully understand this is transition, I live out that direction, so, and so I'm fully aware of the highway called Eller Road now. So, you know, 50 miles an hour is a suggestion on that road now. So, I get it, but sometimes B2 can be a little intrusive, having neighbors butting to your back line, and if you can accomplish everything with a B1, it lends us to, please, if you need the B2, justify the B2.
Sure, sure. So, where we are within the, within the process is B1 offices, and also, we've talked to people, we have not had any signed leases or anything like that. So, what we're running into is to be able to build the center and buy the land. Our concern is that in offices, within medical offices, may be able to afford the square-footed price per rent to be able to construct this building, but it's hard to limit ourselves without leases in place at this moment, and of course, we don't want to sign leases until we know what the zoning can be. So, we kind of want to keep our options open, I guess you can say, to some of those things. Now, I will clearly say, we don't want liquor stores, you know, we don't want, even though there's one coming across the street at, at that, we don't want that type. As a matter of fact, we're talking with the neighbors, we made it very clear that we're not going to bring any of that. We're going to try to be as cautious as we can about lights from cars in their yard and different things like that, but we feel like a B1 may limit us to, if we have that last tenant that needs to be filled, it may limit us to who we can put in that spot. So, that's kind of, that's where we stand on the project, if that answers your question.
It does, but you opened, you opened the door, so no one will ask you. You have talked to the neighbors.
We have, yeah. So, we've, we've talked to quite a few of the neighbors, let's put it that way. We knew of one neighbor last week that was, that had an issue, and we went, there was staff in my office, went, knocked on the door, got the guy on the phone, talked to him. We just found out yesterday of a neighbor that had an issue in my office. We took, made two attempts to call that person, and something was wrong with the cell phone number that, that we were given, but yes, we have, we've talked to the offices next to us, to Bartlesdale Bank, to a few people in the church, I'm not sure exactly who it was within the church that we talked to, but we have tried to, to talk to them and just let them know kind of what our plans are on that.
That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Barre.
Mr. Ramides?
Yeah, do you feel like you've addressed the concerns that they have?
For the neighbors?
Yeah.
The only main concern that we've heard is the value of the residence at, at that location of the specific neighbor, and that's a hard one to address. I'm a broker, real estate and commercial broker, and we do both within my office, so I kind of understand the market. I do know that just down Eller Road, not far from Anytime Fitness, is one of the highest price-per-square-foot listings in the city, you know, and so the, I don't know that it's fully going to affect the real estate, but how, it's kind of hard to, to get people to understand that, that I don't think it's going to affect the value of a, of a residence at all, you know, being a commercial building. So, I think we've told them what we were planning on doing, but did it appease them? I'm not sure, if that makes sense. You don't say?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Do you have something? Okay.
Yes, when you say you talked to your neighbors, did you have a neighborhood meeting? How did you go about reaching out to them?
We did not necessarily have a neighborhood meeting. We have a neighbor that lives directly behind this property that has gone on our behalf and talked to a bunch of the neighbors. They were the ones who we got in touch with yesterday that mentioned about one other neighbor that we tried to reach out to, to yesterday. So, it wasn't officially a neighborhood meeting with everybody together.
So, you're saying just yesterday, that was the time that you reached out to them? And the reason why I'm saying this, this is a RA, residential to B2.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just saying, what was your procedures in reaching out to the residential people that surrounded this in the RA district?
So, the neighbor was actually the one that did that and has done this over months. This, I think we signed a contract on this property in February, I think is when we signed the contract with the property, and the neighbor has just, who lives there, has just gone and talked to people where there are issues with the zoning and different things. And again, this specific neighbor that we talked to yesterday apparently had been okay with it until just maybe a day or two ago. We just found out yesterday is when they had an issue, and that's why we tried to reach out to them, you know, on behalf of that. The other neighbor, the other neighbor's not directly behind, it's kind of down the road a little bit, and we heard, I'm not sure exactly how we heard in our office, that that gentleman had an issue with it, but one of my staff guys, as soon as we found out, went and talked to them, you know, and again, as Mr. Ramides asked, I'm not sure if we've fully addressed his concerns, but I do know as soon as we heard about concerns. But as far as proactively, the, the neighbor had done a lot of that for us on our behalf, and we talked to the neighbor throughout the process, just to make sure was anybody we needed to talk to specifically kind of addressed concerns.
All right, just before we go on, I see Ms. Damon, too, I'd like to ask those folks who are standing to find a seat, ask for the state fire marshal, everybody who's in here also needs to be seated, so I want to be sure that we get everybody seated. Are there seats available up front? So, if you could, would ask you to please be seated in a, in a seat. Thank you. Ms. Damon, too?
Yes, I just want to ask Mr. Barre, you, the way I'm understanding is that you would not accept or do not want to accept a B1 district with the MPC use approval for medical and allied services?
We would prefer a B2 zoning, if that makes sense. Are we completely 100% opposed to the B1 with some stipulations? Not necessarily, but as, as I've said, we've only talked to some of the medical facilities that can come in, we haven't signed leases, and so for us to spend the money on the land and the building, if some of these specific people say no, but...
And I understand your preference, I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, it's okay if you say, no, I want a B2 or nothing, that's, that's your prerogative.
We're, we're not a B2 or nothing.
Okay.
We're not that, but we strongly would prefer a B2.
I completely understand, thanks for clarifying.
Yes, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of the application? Is there anyone else here to speak in support of the application?
Lawrence Gutman, 9454 Red Oak Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana. I am the resident that is probably most directly affected since the property backs up against mine. This map is not accurate. It has been subdivided in the last two months. And in fact, that piece has been cut in half, and there's about 150 feet from the back of the residences up to the fence where they're going to build. I purchased the property a year or so ago, knowing that this was going to happen and to build a buffer for myself and the direct neighbors.
Going across the property?
Yeah, so it goes across about here.
Thank you.
It was a four acre lot that was split into two two acre lots. We kept two, and two is being sold off that borders LRB Road. Excuse me?
Can you draw that on the map with our...
Sure. It's roughly like this where the fence line is. Okay. And that's in the market now. Thank you.
And that's still RA, then?
Yeah.
I had a question.
Mr., I don't know his name.
Griffin?
Yeah, we had a question. Mr. Remedies?
So what you're saying is you purchased the property directly behind this?
I purchased this whole lot that's shown there, and I have subdivided it subsequently.
So you would be the buffer between this development and the neighborhood, right?
Correct. The neighbors have purchased small pieces of property from me, but there's still another buffer between their property and the fence line.
Okay. So this property does not abut a residential?
It, the property that I have purchased and integrated with mine, yes, but it does not abut my original property. It's 250 feet from my original property.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that's what I just wanted to make clear.
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
But there is a fence line there that, roughly where that line is drawn.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify that the property that he bought is still in RA, and whatever he wants to do within RA, if he wants to build another home on it, he could.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, are there any people here to speak in opposition to this application?
I am. I think there may be others.
Sure.
Certainly, but I have heard of you in the Washington address.
If there's a principal spokesperson who is in opposition, you have 10 minutes. Every other spokesperson will have three minutes. So I don't know if you've identified someone who will be a principal spokesperson.
No, we have not had a neighborhood meeting either. So again, I'm happy to defer to someone else and take my turn.
I don't even believe I can hear.
Hold that up, maybe?
Make it stand it up, yeah. Right there on the podium, that's right.
Thank you. My name is Neil Erwin. I'm an attorney representing Dr. Paul Wood, who is the direct neighbor of this. My address is 415 Texas Street, Suite 101 in Shreveport. And Dr. Wood and his family live right here. So they are the abutting neighbor to the south and to the east. And Dr. Wood has purchased all of the properties to LRB Road, so he abuts this entire side of this proposed development. I suggest to you that there are two good reasons to deny this. And whether the request is for rezoning to B2 or B1, as the staff recommends as being the maximum rezoning, there is a sound basis, I suggest to you, for considering this to be spot zoning. If we can get this one up again, please. No, this, this, oh, yeah. We've got the different cameras. Where do I do that? Oh, good. I have outlined in green to show you that the property itself is entirely surrounded by RA property except for this one little piece right here, which abuts East Ridge Country Club, which was rezoned solely so that the clubhouse could have functions and serve alcohol. But otherwise, there's a country club right here. Otherwise, it is completely surrounded by RA. Now, let's think about what the American Planning Association defines as spot zoning. I know you already know that. You've all been trained. It is the rezoning of a small area for a use which differs measurably from the land surrounding it. And such zoning does not conform to the future land use plan and is not otherwise necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. As stated, the site is surrounded by RA. Let's look at the future land use. As shown in the Goodie Clancy plan, the future land use is shown to be low-density residential. That was what was proposed in that. Under the UDC, not yet adopted by the parish, but recommended by you, the recommended zoning in this area is residential estate. And residential estate means the purpose is to provide for large lot estate-type residential areas that create a low-density environment that relates to the natural setting. Limited non-residential uses are allowed that are compatible with a low-density, open character of the district. So it looks like you would find that this is spot zoning, which is not allowed. You would be trading an existing RA piece of property that was allowed as a special section used to be used as a church for this, which is described by the applicant as a strip center. So not only is it in violation of the future land use now, but you would be swapping an existing use for a greatly more intensive use. And then I would make this point to you, just for your consideration, please. It's easy to say that LRB is in transition. It's easy to say that LRB Road is changing. But you need to be very careful in terms of what neighborhoods we're talking about as you did in your own consideration of the rezoning that will occur with the UDC. This area is the Duke Kroger. And this here is all considered to be rezoned for residential estate. If you look, going down LRB Road, you have two B1 pieces of property that were rezoned, but looking residential in character. You have a church right across from this property. You have Dr. Wood's property here. You have All Souls Unitarian Church. You have the Glofs Neighborhood here, a new subdivision that has homes of over $250,000. I looked it up today. Then you have a small B1 here that is used as an oil and gas office, but is a residence. You have Bartstale Federal Credit Union, which is rezoned to B1, but looks more residential than commercial. And the only B2 is Cushus Roastery. So in this entire neighborhood here, it is actually not in transition. There are absolutely no changes occurring other than new residential development. So I would suggest to you that if you consider rezoning even to B1, you would have to consider a stipulation, please, that would maintain the residential character of that property. Let me show you what I'm talking about, if I can get this up, please. This is the accounting office, which is northwest of the site, but separated by a vacant RA lot. When this was rezoned to B1, it was required to be residentially compatible. This is the law office here, which is next to the accounting office. And you can see the residential style and compatibility of this development, and that was by design. That was the character of the area that was meant to be maintained, even if there was rezoning to B1. But just because those two have been rezoned doesn't mean that they must be rezoned. And particularly for this particular piece of property, for this particular use. Take a look at this site plan that they have proposed. It's a 10,000 square foot building, which completely paves the site. And look at where the parking is. It is an intensive B2 use, whether it would be considered for rezoning as B2 or B1. And therefore, for these reasons, I suggest to you that this really should be opposed as being spot zoning, being out of character with the development pattern that has been established in the area that has maintained the residential character. And to show you that it's easy to say that LRB Road is in transition. It's easy to say that LRB Road is changing, but not this neighborhood on the north side. Thank you. Any questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
It's... Oh, I do.
Ms. DeMartu?
This is in the parish, not the city limits.
It is.
Thank you.
So it's, any discussion about the UDC would be in terms of your recommendation rather than what has yet been adopted by the parish?
Yeah, the parish has not, unfortunately, has not adopted it yet.
That's correct. And so the Goodie Clancy one would be the next fallback for this, which shows it as low-density residential.
I just wanted to confirm it was parish. Thank you.
That is. It is parish. Thank you. Any other questions?
Young?
Please don't go, because I may have something. But Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Okay. First, can you confirm that the back half of the lot, which is showing everything that's highlighted, is the back half is now belongs to the residents as opposed to someone else's? So this really is parched in half?
Yes. That map is incorrect. It's in your packet. It should be half that distance.
Okay. That's not a problem. The only other thing I wanted to point out was, was it looks like on the south side of this property...
In fact, if you look up at the screen, that actually matches what they're actually talking about.
Very good.
It matches the legal that was submitted.
Okay. Given what I'm looking at on the site, proposed site plan, it looks like there's a large buffer between the concrete parking lot and the south boundary line, and that's where the flooding water retention pond is. But is that held in concrete? Or, I mean, is that set in stone?
Again, that's just for exhibit. That's not been reviewed in a group.
Got it. I was just trying to figure out if that was being used as a buffer in that direction.
At this point in time, I couldn't tell you.
I got it. I just wanted clarification, because I saw that they were planning, at least in concept, what we were presented with from the civil engineering group. So, thank you. Thank you. I don't have anything. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The only other comment I would make would be that if this is being considered merely conceptual, then they ought to come back with something more definite, if it's going to be this much of a change in the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Wait, I have a question. I'm sorry.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just legally, since you're a lawyer. What's your opinion of what our board's options are? If it were, if a B1 were to be approved, if it were B1 or B2, what power do you think our board might have at this time to condition or limit the type of architectural style or...
Character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, just the character of whatever he develops, just the strip center or whatever it is.
I'll give...
How would we, yeah, what would we be basing our authority on?
I think an answer to that would be a question that came up in the approval of the... This is the site plan that was approved, and it's noted as having been approved with stipulations. Nowhere on line can I find what those stipulations were concerning the site plan approval, which leads me to believe that it is possible, subject to Mr. Sweeney's interpretation, that you would be able to place stipulations concerning any site plan approval. However, because site plan approval would be subject to the discretion of the executive director, we'd have to be careful, or I'd suggest you would need to be careful, because here is another example of a recent site plan approval for an office and warehouse. And you can contrast the detail of elevation compared to the detail of this elevation. So at the least, you would, I think, require a stipulation, as suggested, that you would require that there be architectural sensitivity, that there be a design sensitivity, parking and paving, to make sure it's residentially compatible. And you would do that either as a stipulation or as a policy directive or guidance to the executive director, assuming Mr. Sweeney would accept that. Because I have not yet heard or had a chance to discuss with him whether he would think that's any infringement on his discretion. If there would be any question about it, then I think what all you can do is say you would reject this as proposed and have it come back as B1, because it's not B1 now, but I have to accept that with a more definite site plan and elevation that shows that residential compatibility, because right now, it certainly does not.
Okay. Okay, and Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
With the storage facility at Madison Park, what was our...
I can, yes.
Explain that?
How did you get there?
Right.
Well, there's two things you've got to remember with this site. Is, as you know, site plan approval is no longer under the purview of the MPC board. That's an administratively reviewed item through the staff. So that option is not on the table for site plan review.
But it wasn't on the table back then either, right? When we did the Madison Park?
Right, right.
So that's the same. Okay.
But let me explain something. So try to follow me on this. If you're doing straight zoning, let's say from RA to B1 zoning, and that's all you're doing, the board does not have the purview or the option of adding stipulations to straight zoning. You can only do that under a planned unit development or a small planned unit development or a special use permit. In straight zoning, it has to be exactly the way the zoning lays it out. You don't add any stipulations. You can't condition it. Okay? But there's an exception here. And this is following kind of what Neil is saying. When you did the Ricky Leonard facility with the cold storage facility, with our climate control facility, where you had the retail and the storage component that was put together, that was a use approval. That's what he came forward requesting a use approval to go above the minimum or the maximum level of storage facility that he could have for the site. And under that, it's very specific in our current ordinance that says under use approval, this body can add additional conditions and stipulations to that site per the use approval process. Now, let's talk about this site. If this site was simply going to just from RA to B1 like we're proposing, we wouldn't be able to do anything. It's straight zoning. There's no conditions allowed, period. But because we added in the use approval for a medical facility, if you'll notice, that's part of that, that opens the door to do what Neil is asking about. Because when it opens up to be a use approval along with a rezoning, you have the authority to add additional conditions and stipulations to the property.
So if he wanted to build this medical facility?
Yes.
He would have to come back and get, with the site plan, to get it approved? To get that facility approved?
Because we combined the two together under the zoning, he would not have to come back. He would just have to come to us for site plan approval. But if you add... But if you added additional stipulations like what Neil is saying here, then we would have to follow those stipulations as we were designing and laying out the site plan. I hope I've not confused you.
I'm just trying to figure out how, I'm trying to figure out how it would be awarded where we are allowed to add additional stipulations, because...
Because it's just doing the use approval alone opens the door for you. Whether it's for a medical facility or for something else, it opens the door to give you legal authority to stipulate certain things to this property that you would normally not be able to do.
And that's what, hang on, let me look at your work.
But if you drop off, if you drop off the use approval off of this application, you don't have the authority to change anything. It has to be straight zoning and nothing more.
But y'all, but the staff is recommending that we approve it as a B1 with a use approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have any other comments about what you just heard?
I do. And I appreciate Mr. Sweeney's candor about that. That means you really can't control the site plan. And I wondered about that, whether or not you could have a policy directive or a stipulation. And I think the answer is no, other than as to the use. And the one thing I would point out about the use is, under your own matrix, recommended in the UDC, again, the zoning, this is going to be rezoned under the UDC once it's adopted by the parish. We all, we all plan on that. We all plan on that. But let's at least talk about your thinking. Your thinking was that it was going to be residential estate. Medical use is not allowed in an RE.
In a what?
In an RE, residential estate. In what you had recommended this property be rezoned to, under the UDC, a medical use would not be allowed. So therefore, medical use really isn't what's anticipated for this. And you have no control over the site plan, so the only option I believe you have is to deny for now, have them come back with something different. They wouldn't have to wait, because instead of a B2, they'd be asking for a B1.
I can address the residential estate. Residential estate was introduced, and you have to, you have to open your mind to this, as a holding pattern type zoning. It was meant to protect existing neighborhoods along the fringes of the development in Shreveport. But it was, it is never necessarily, it can remain as an existing zoning. There's nothing wrong with it. But it can also, when we put RE on the map under the UDC, we knew then in the back of our mind that as you go down Ellerby Road and Floranolucas, that some of that RE zoning would be eventually converted to commercial development, because we knew the market would dictate that. So we created a base zoning that was kind of a holding but protective pattern for those neighborhoods, knowing that at some point in time in the very near future, the rezoning would occur for commercial development at some level. So basically, that's one of the reasons why the staff has no problem with a B1 zoning with a use approval for medical. Because we see that as being in concert with the market, yet still protecting the neighborhood.
Ms. Cooper, that's not exactly what that says. I know that's what maybe is intended. It says limited non-residential uses for an RE are allowed that are compatible with the low density, open character of the district. So that is what you intended through your adoption of the UDC and the recommendation of it. And those would be the only uses that would be allowed other than large lot estate type residential areas. So, you don't have that before you. You don't have a site plan before you that is compatible with the low density, open character of the district. You have one that is proposed and preferred as B2, that almost totally paves the lot. And so I think you, there is a serious, serious problem with trying to go forward with the proposal as it now is before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. And I'm so sorry that we're taking so long.
Is anyone else to speak in opposition to this application?
Chair, when you get the chance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Neil?
No, Neil's okay. This is more for Mr. Sweeney while the next one's coming up. Mr. Sweeney? If I understood you correctly, you said the cause they asked for special use, it gives us some leeway.
Correct.
And I looked at the proposed site plan, and I remember back to the case of the 711 on Piermont in Southfield. No, I'm sorry, Lion Avenue in Piermont or Southfield, where we, they were acquiring the other two properties, and we intentionally went in and put a 30-foot buffer zone that we left at lower zone. Is that something that could be done to protect the adjacent property that's still RA? It's because it looks like their intent, and I'm going to ask Mr. Bur...
Well...
Burar? I'm sorry.
We don't, as a policy, we do not offer split zoning anymore.
Okay.
That split zoning was actually more or less a settlement in a court setting.
Ah, yeah.
And that, and if that project was being redone today, we wouldn't do that.
We would do, well, I just remember that case, and so I'm looking at it. I'm just trying to find some, if that was the green zone left abutting of Dr. Paul Woods' property.
And I don't really have anything that's of a lower nature than a B1 that still kind of fits with the property, since that is designed to be compatible with adjacent single-family neighborhoods. That's the intent of the B1.
All right, I want to carry this one step further, and then I'm done. If the applicant put it on record, their intent, that that's the way they were going to site plan it, that they would leave that, hard that in as a buffer zone, that would not be uncalled for. If he decided that, he wanted to do that, and I'm speaking, I cannot speak on his behalf.
If you added it in as a condition, that that portion be remained as a landscape buffer zone between the building and the adjacent property, we would incorporate that in our site plan review and would be required.
Okay, I'm just trying to box him in.
Sure.
I'm not trying to box him in at all. I'm just looking at what he gave us as a preliminary
Right.
For something else to work off of, and it abuts Dr. Paul Woods' property, and I'm just looking at what are options available for us.
Absolutely.
And that's where I was going with that. I am by no means speaking for Dr. Woods or for the applicant at all. But, and he can, he can fill us into his intent when he gets to come back and rebut. So I'm just trying to look for a compromise around this.
Absolutely.
So, Ms. Chair, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. That's it. Anyone else to speak in opposition, if you would come? Those who are here to speak in opposition? If you would, for the record, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name's Lemoyne Batten, 9452 Red Oak, 71106. Look on that map. I'm right where the R is on RA. I live right behind that property. My wife and I, and the neighbors I've talked to, do not want it to be zoned B2. I don't think any of us would have a problem with it being zoned R, I mean now B1, as outlined by Mr. Irwin. That's, that's what I had to say.
Any questions, anyone? Yes, Mr. Joseph?
Thank you for your time. You're suggesting that you'd be okay with B1 if it were architecturally suited to the neighborhood?
Yeah, yes. Right. Where the B1 is now, that's, I can see that from my backyard, and I can live with that. Because Mr. Gutman is my neighbor, who owns a property, and I'm sure he wants to sell that property. And I'm okay with the B1. I just don't want B2 designation.
Hi, I'm Sue Hines. I live at 9406 Red Oak Lane. A lot of y'all are familiar faces, because Red Oak Lane has been here a lot of times. And in our, in our last visit to y'all, we worked with Nicely Builders, and it, we worked with them for months and months to come to a conclusion that was good for both of us. And we finally did. And Mr. Nicely and his family and his architecture company planned to build right behind our house. I guess we're, we're 9406, so we're the third house on the street on the right. And the lot behind us has now been cleared of all the trees, and the train is very, very loud now. So when Mr. Nicely does build there, we feel like it's going to be a buffer. But now, we're worried that Mr. Nicely, who hasn't built yet, could change his mind, and instead of it being office buildings, it could be something that's listed in this B2. We did not know about this meeting at all until our neighbors told us about it. We didn't get the letter that they got, and we were not contacted by anyone who's going to be building there or anything. So, we knew nothing about this. Nobody's talked to us about any of the change. And we're extremely worried that the place behind our house now could be, could be something worse than office buildings. And like I said, we protested the office buildings and all for a good long while. But what has been built facing Ellerby so far is very tasteful and very nice. And that's what we hope for when other things are built there. And we don't want any grocery stores, or beauty shop, or, you know, any of the things that could be much less than what we've already had and agreed to. And we appreciate your consideration, and I appreciate you, Mr. Young, pointing out the differences that could happen in B1 and B2, and that's what we're extremely worried about. So I appreciate y'all listening to us. Is there anything?
Anybody have any questions?
I'd ask the same question, Reed. Are you agreeable with the potential move to a B1 as long as there's architectural stipulations?
As long as there's stipulations, yes. B1 would be something we could live with, yes.
Leah?
I want to clear, I'm getting a little confused. Maybe Mark or Steven, if you could clarify?
Yes.
I know that if we did the B1 and we have a special use.
The use approval.
Use approval, excuse me. Can we stipulate what the architectural type? I thought that was illegal. I thought we couldn't do that.
Under straight zoning, you cannot. It says in our current ordinance that under use approval, you can add conditions. Now, it doesn't go into great deal deal what those conditions are. I would caution you not to try to discern what the architecture will be. But if you said something like that the structure should be designed so that it is similar in construction materials and design to that of the single-family homes nearby, that would be open-ended enough to give the applicant the freedom to come up with whatever architectural design he wants to. He could do contemporary. He could do traditional. He could do colonial. But we're not going to try, I wouldn't try to stipulate that.
So it could be adequate, character with the neighborhood, because we can't stipulate what, if it's contemporary or...
And I wouldn't go there. That's a little bit, that's on shaky ground if you go there. And instead, I would just simply say something more generic that says that it is designed and such that is no more than, you could say how many stories it could be. You could say that it should be designed such that it is compatible in architectural design to, or a similar design to some of the homes in the area. Basically, and in the same types of materials, like brick and wood materials or something, as opposed to being glass or whatever. You could certainly go that direction, but you just have to be very careful that you don't get into specific, over-specific architectural design standards, because we really don't have any standards in the current code that relate to this. So...
So it's kind of broad?
It's broad, and I don't want to, I don't want to tell you anything otherwise. It's broad enough, though, that would give the applicant the freedom to do what he needs to do, at the same time being compatible with that neighborhood.
And who gets to decide if it's compatible or not?
Well, it would come through the site plan review process, which means I would end up, me and my staff would end up looking at it, and, you know, and saying, okay, if you said it could be no more than two stories maximum height, or one story maximum height, or that it had to have some type of element that would at least be compatible with the adjacent properties, then we would look at it from that broad scope. I wouldn't get into whether or not it was contemporary versus traditional versus colonial. I would look at it in a broader scope based on what you tell me to look at. And that would be my governing policy, other than the criteria, the basic criteria of site plan review that he has to do. So, understand that. I know it's kind of nebulous, but that's kind of where we are.
And I want them to understand that as much as we are.
Yes, yes, yes.
Could I say one thing? When I, when I said that we worked with Mr. Nicely and his company, we worked on things like it would be a one-story building. It would not have big outside lights on the back that would come into our yard. It would not have parking on the back, things like that. And I suppose I'm correct in saying that that's still the case?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's still within the zone.
Anybody have any other questions? They aren't stepped out, so...
The chair.
Yeah. Pardon, please bear with me. Does anybody have any other questions for her? Does anybody else have anything to say in opposition? Just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Paul Wood. I live at 224 Golf Ridge Drive. Mr. Sweeney, members of the MPC, thank you for hearing us. My property is to the east and right around to the south here. My, my little, I'm a fish out of water here. I'm sorry. This is not easy for me. My wife and I bought this property 40 years ago, and we built our home there, and we have lived there continuously since that time. We have seen a lot of people wanting to develop property in this area. My feelings are more emotional and everything than anything, and I just want to make it perfectly clear that I'm against any change to business at all, because this is what we're going to end up with. And we are surrounded. That property is surrounded by residential property right now. I think that would be considered spot zoning. I'm not an attorney. But as the developers have come in, it's been very clear to us that they're just about making a dollar. And nothing wrong with making a dollar, but they don't care about our property values or what happens to the homeowners surrounding their development. And that's why I'm totally opposed to business zoning when it's surrounded by residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
In all fairness, you're not just Paul Woods, you're Dr. Paul Woods.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else to speak in opposition? Mr. Buray, would you like to offer rebuttal?
Yes, I would. First of all, I do appreciate all y'all's time and concerns and questions. I'd actually answered a lot of questions for myself. I do want everybody to, I'm glad Mr. Gutman was here to point out, because I forgot to point out as well, that half of this property is becoming a buffer to those residential properties that this map right here shows. I also want to show too, this is the most recent, our architect's here with us, and this is the most recent site plan, and I want to point out this east side of the property that you addressed, Mr. Young. Right there is a big ditch with a lot of trees. Nothing can be built there. It's not our intent to fill that up. As a matter of fact, the majority of this land that we're buying, well, a big chunk of this land that we're buying is unusable land in that area. So there will be a very large buffer if we need to state that, however we need to state that, so that it's not built on, so it can be a buffer. We'll be definitely glad to do that. We, the big triangle-looking thing will actually be our retention pond. We're kind of moving it towards that ditch area, so we're not going to be adding that. There have been concerns, we've heard concerns, about lights going into your yard and all that type stuff. And we have made it very clear to the Gutmans and others that we've talked to about, we don't want to do that either. We want to be considerate of neighbors, and we want the lights to stay in ours. As you noticed, there is no parking on the back of the piece of land. And so that's something very intentional for us. The only thing that will be on the back will be a small drive-through for the bank, and the bank is a small bank, mainly only deals with commercial clients here in town. They're not a, it's not going to be a very heavy traffic, the drive-through. And so anyway, so that will kind of be the only activity really on the back of this property. Hearing the concerns about B2 versus B1, when I think of B2, I understand it does open us up to a lot of retail and all that type stuff, and that's not fully our goal. Our goal is not to put in some of those things, as I mentioned earlier. For us, it's just more of a capacity to reach out beyond just a medical office, you know, or something like that. And unfortunately, as Mr. Dr. Woods mentioned, I, there is economics to this, unfortunately for us. We have to, we have to balance the price of land versus price of the building to see if it works for our development team or not. And so, so that is unfortunate, and I get that, and I know that's a very difficult thing to balance. We are very concerned for the neighbors. We want the neighbors to be comfortable back there. We don't want to bother them. We don't want to bother them. We don't want light in their yard or different things like that. And so, concerning the architectural design, for us, we just got to give it to our architect and see what that does. and see what that does, you know, to, to the cost of the building and different things like that. This is a hardened board siding with limestone on it is where, where we have it at right now. We did that because we didn't want just a metal building out there, we wanted something, there is a lot of glass in this building, I do understand that. We're not opposed to changing some of those things as long as it fits within parameters. And again, unfortunately, it's the economic side of things that we have to look at, you know, when it comes to those things. And I don't know, I don't know the process from here, because I'm not overly familiar with these, these settings, but if we go with, I want to protect Mr. Gutman as well, who owns the land. If we go to a B1 zoning with certain requirements on the, and I know we can't specify what that is, but if we had a use towards the architecture or whatever, I don't want it to prohibit him from potentially finding somebody else if it means that we can't do it. Does that make sense? Do you understand where I'm trying to go with that? So, and I don't know how that works, I don't know if y'all stamp it today and say, okay, it's B1 with the exception of these few things and it, and Mr. Gutman's now stuck holding this property and not to sell it because it kind of pushes developers out of the way. Does that, does that make any sense to y'all? I just want to protect them.
I, I do have a concern. You were indicating that it's not your intention, but you would agree that if we changed the zoning to B2, then that zoning...
Is there.
That's where we are.
And I completely understand.
And if some other developer comes in and decides to do something different, then these neighbors, these residents are cashed out.
And I do, I, I understand that. And I don't know, can we do a more B2 zoning with stipulations on a lesser side of things or can we open up a little bit more stipulations on a B1 zoning beyond the medical, just open it up to, I know off y'all's website, a B1 buffer district, it has light retail and things like that on here, I don't know if those stipulations are built in to the B1 or can we?
You, you don't have the option because if you go for the B2, there's no use approval and that doesn't open the door for them to put conditions on it.
Gotcha.
And that means that if you flip the property, a service station could pop up here.
And I understand that and I, I wouldn't want that for the Gutmans or any of you.
That leaves, but see, the problem is, is that's, that leaves the door open and that's why there's concern.
Gotcha, gotcha. And I, I do understand that, so I understand the balance there. You know, and maybe a, a B1, as you mentioned earlier, we completely opposed to it, no. Of course, y'all understand where we're at, you understand where we're at as far as the, the business side of, of what it is, but we're not completely opposed to a B1 with stipulations. If those are stipulations, are those the only stipulations or can we come back and say, hey, Mr. Sweeney, we've got this tenant, does this tenant work?
You would have to, you'd have to refile a different application. Now, the next step after this, if, let's say they approved a B1 with the use approval and put some conditions on it, you would then go to city council or, I mean, to the parish commission for a final review and approval by them. Once they did that, then the next step would be site plan approval from you, that's done administratively in-house. If at some point in time you change your mind, you want to do something different, it might require you to have to come back and ask for a change in the zoning in order to be able to do that.
Gotcha. So does it, if we, if we stamp approval today, does it stick the Gutmans with this approval moving forward? Because right now, they own the land. And again, I don't want to...
You'd have changed the...
It has to go to the parish commission first for their final approval. And then once they do that, then the zoning is approved and set for the B1 with the use approval with their conditions. And then we wait for you to come in with your site plan to do an actual site plan for this site.
I believe he's asking if it, it's, it's not just approved because you might buy it, it is, that, that zoning stays with the property for until, until someone asks for a different zone.
Until somebody else changes.
That stays with the property.
Right. It's not contingent, it's not contingent on the sale of the property.
Right, sure.
So if it changes, it changes.
Right, right, okay. Well, again, we're not opposed.
I'm just putting a little plug here.
Yes.
If and when the parish commission finally adopts the UDC, it will open the door for more options for you to develop in the parish. Right now, I have, my hands are tied, but you'll be able to develop a lot of things in the city if you cross the line and get it annexed into the city. But once, as long as it's at the parish and they don't have an adopted UDC, we have very few options for you.
Gotcha.
And that's something you need to be aware of.
Sure. As you know, we've talked through this before.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, so I'm aware of, then, I did want to point out again, there's a, there's a buffer if we need to say something about that, that's completely fine.
Just for clarification, if you build here and just not annexed in, you have to depend on the volunteer fire station way down on Leonard Road as opposed to the one that's parked across the street from you?
So is this a pitch, is that?
So, just telling you.
Throwing it out there, huh?
You have a fire station across the street, but you would have to...
I will tell you, I was shocked that this was in the parish and not in the city. Once we started working on it, I did not realize, I did not realize that that whole trip, yeah. So, any other questions or anything I can address again?
Mr. Remides?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest is that if you got the B1, when the, the UDC takes place, that you'll be, you'll, some of those opportunities I think that you're looking for are going to open up to you and it won't be quite as restrictive. But if, let's just say that it doesn't, you could always, if you had a specific use, you could come back and ask for a variance, but, I mean, of course, there's a timeline involved in that too, but that could be, it's always an option.
Gotcha, gotcha.
If you could get a variation in which you...
And that helps.
So it's not stuck forever and if, let's say that we do change it and they don't and, and you don't purchase the property, well, the same would go for any other potential. It would actually make your property more, their property more valuable because the zoning's already been changed. And as you know, it's not an easy process to go through and get everything done, so...
Right, that's a good point.
Yeah. Sure, you're not hurting them by having that change.
Okay, gotcha. It's one protected, gotcha. Any other questions or?
Do you do discussion?
All right.
Thank you.
No other questions? Questions, commission?
Discussion?
Yes. Anything else?
Go ahead.
I'll tell you what, what...
Chairman, could I pass on, I submitted a proposed condition, if that is going to be acceptable. Mr. Sweeney, I think he has one of his own, could I pass that on for his...
Actually, they have a copy of that.
Good, actually just kind of worked on the...
Oh, we, oh.
Give it to Mr. Sweeney, he'll, give it to Mr. Sweeney, he'll pass it on. Thank you.
Okay, so what's before us is a, is a B2. Are we in discussion?
Actually...
There's a lot, a lot to consider here, just to open up the discussion and hopefully everyone will join in. The gentleman has asked for a B2, prefers that, but would accept a B1 with the special, I'm going to say it, with the use approval. Do you want me to read this or something?
If you wish, that's, that's what's...
Use, if, use approval is contingent on...
Development?
Can I, can I help with that?
Maybe.
Lawyers are bad writers, we hope not quite as bad as doctors, but we're still bad. Use approval is contingent on development of any structure on the site as residential and design character consistent with the established residential pattern and style of the neighborhood on the east side of Ellerby Road, including sensitivity to compatibility and hours of op, oh, you crossed out hours of operation.
Yes.
In paving and parking.
If hours of operation are going out the door with the UDC, that's not something you're regulating?
The only reason it was raised is because we noticed that in the existing parish zoning ordinance, that the only restriction on hours of operation B1 is for retail, which is an odd, an oddity.
Right, yeah.
So conditioning a B1 with this wording, condition or another wording, or he's not really asking for this, he just denies a B2?
Well, he's asking for the B2 and I'm inclined to...
Mr. Chair.
But, Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Were you done?
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Is it even legal to take that from the attorney, that amount, that depth of language and add it to the stipulation? I'm concerned we may be broaching a little too deep.
No, that actually is acceptable.
That is acceptable, that, no, that's the clarification that I needed.
In fact, if you notice...
Because I knew the conversation was where it was going to go and I was a little eager for some clarification.
That is generic enough that it gives the applicant a lot of leeway, but also gives us enough guidance to guide them through the site plan process. But it's not too strict as to determine what the architecture and design of the actual building.
Thank you very much.
Ms., Ms. David?
I'm, I'm a little confused with the, the neighbors around, I know some of them, the ones behind them, were acceptable of the B1 with the exception, special use and the wording, the additional wording, but I believe that Dr. Wood, is that the gentleman's name, is, maybe I'm wrong, but is opposed to any B1 or B2 there. Correct? Correct? And the gentleman is asking for a B2, as you were saying.
If I'm inclined to deny the B2, I think that maybe, this might be the sort of thing that we can defer and get a better grip and more concrete grip on exactly the type of wording, Mr. Sweeney, that would be conducive to what we're looking at.
Or with the applicant.
I, I think the only thing on this case that I would look at is the, I'm okay with that wording as it is set right there as we just discussed. And the idea of there being a buffer between the building and, which is where the drainage facility is going to be anyway, but just saying that that area has to be maintained as a wooded or landscaped buffer between the building and that resident. Other than that, I think that's about as far as you can go. I don't, I don't perceive that we would come back to the table with anything extra besides that. That's pretty much it.
Mr. Colvin? There's a lot of discussion about this one, I think if the applicant would like to defer and delay, that may be a good option for him to talk to the neighbors and all get on the same page.
Yes.
But if it came down to a vote today, what this gentleman said, Curtis, is it would not be a B2 in my book due to the others on that same street. At most, it would be a B1.
That's right.
We don't zone property to what the future may be. We zone property to what's at hand, okay? Been told that many times before. And the others have that architect design, so if he can live with that stipulation, we could go ahead today and vote. Now, if the chairman wants to ask him back up to the stand and say A or B, it's his choice. But that's the two options I look at.
All right, anybody else? So, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on that. The property is on B1, but stipulation is recommended from the floor because of the wording, it's very applicable, but what, the goal that we're trying to get accomplished at this particular time.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrews, a second by Mr. Remides.
And that includes the use approval.
To approve, for, for use approval and stipulations as...
Does it need to be read into the record?
I think it's already been read.
It's been read.
It's been read.
Yeah. Any questions?
And that ultimate site plan goes back to you, correct, Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews, that also includes the buffer zone on the...
Yes, sir.
I always consider it the south side because I'm, I thought that was the south department, but I don't know. Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
If there are no other questions, all in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no.
I thought this was not the hard case.
Right, it passes, that zoning passes, thank you. Our next case is case number C-75-16, amended zoning request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you pass this down to Mark, please?
Mr. Chairman, on case number C-75-16, I believe there's been a request to defer and continue.
Mr. Andrews, is that your motion?
Motion, I so moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Mr. Andrews and Mr. Young respectively on case number seven, C-75-16, to defer and continue, all in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no.
Now we go.
Passes, we will defer until our May 3 meeting. Our next case is case number...
June, June meeting.
I'm sorry, until our June meeting. Case number C-41-17, put zoning request and preliminary site plan for CenterPoint Integrated Solutions. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Good afternoon, Austin Allen with CenterPoint Integrated Solutions, 355 Union Boulevard, Suite 301, Lakewood, Colorado. I'm here on behalf of CarMax. So, just a little bit about the site, I know you guys have this staff report, but we are looking to rezone from a B3 to a B3 PUD, about 8.63 acres. Worked with Stephen, Adam and Lauren quite a bit on getting the, getting the amenities worked out. So I think we're at a positive point there. A little bit about CarMax, they started in 1993, they worked their way up to number 232 on the Fortune 500, top 100 places to work for, 14 years straight. And they opened their 165th store, I'm sorry, 172nd store, last month in the Seattle area. Never closing a store. This is a two-phase approach, looking at about 12 to 20 employees in phase one, phase two, looking at about 72, 85 totaling around 105 maximum employees at this location. I don't know if you guys have any questions in regards to the site plans, in regards to the amenities or any of the other stipulations that we've put on this? Be happy to answer anything.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any others here to speak in support of this application? Mr. Arsenault?
Tom Arsenault, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, Louisiana, 701, I represent CarMax. We have talked about this case a good bit in connection with the UDC. This is, this is the case that avoided the need for some amendments that would have created some things. I wanted to just remind you that that's what this is about, ask for your support and also compliment the MPC staff for, one, suggesting this solution and then...